We've got some presentations we'll be going through. The purpose of this meeting, after watching these presentations, the purpose of the cog is to vote on them and decide what we decide is best for the county. As far as transportation and everything else. So I hope all of you have come with it this with an attitude that I'm coming here, what's gotta be said. And vote accordingly to what's gonna be best for all of us, not just take your one or the other. Because that's really what we're all about here at the cog. And that's what makes it really nice to have to try to sell it to the county when we can demonstrate what we've done. So I appreciate y'all showing up tonight. On the first part of the agenda is to welcome and introductions. I'll go ahead and have Jeff start.
Jeff Gilbert with the CNPO and its staff to the cog.
Jesse Moss, Cash County and staff to the cog.
Frank Ida, Clarkston. Paul Erickson, Richmond.
Chris Monson, Springfield.
Larry Johnson, Paradise.
Brian Cox, Hightower.
Lucy Peterson, North Logan.
Holly Day, Logan.
Jason Thompson, River Heights.
Yeah, we know those probably.
Ed Buse, Mandan.
Tom Bailey, Roosevelt. David Hare, Millville.
Larry Jacobson, Dibley.
Stephanie Miller, Hyrum.
David, Malaga.
Megan, Idaho County.
Okay, thank you. Now, if you go through this night, I'd like to ask everybody as they ask questions to state your name. So we have it on the record, they're gonna report this. So if you state your name when you ask the question, so it's clear, so anybody listening to this will know exactly who's asking the questions. We welcome everybody else who's joined us tonight, just gonna participate in presentations. Thank you very much for the efforts you put into these. And we hope that all goes as you'd have planned. We know a lot of work has went into this and we appreciate everything you've done. Uh, the next item on our agenda is approve the minutes of our April twenty-fourth meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Yeah, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I'll turn the time over to uh Jeff and Jesse. And again, I'd like to also thank those two individuals for everything they've done. And helping coordinate this, the training they put in. Helped us all with and the continued support they provide us. They get hundreds of questions on a daily basis. About what we need and how to do it. They go above and beyond as far as I'm concerned what they do. So I'd like to thank them. And I'll turn the tunnel then it has time to talk about the award amount. Do three and four, and then we'll start the applicant projects. I think we've got twelve of them.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. So if we can, we'll give you five minutes and then questions.
Yeah, Jeff's gonna give you, if you're presenting, Jeff's gonna give you a little whisper when you have one minute left, just so that again, we're trying to keep somewhat to a schedule so that we, not everyone wants to be here all night, so we know there's a lot and we're giving them the time they need, but wanna keep it to a reasonably timed meeting, so.
Yeah, one of the most important things we can do as a cog member in representing our communities is to ask questions. And thoroughly understand what this project is. I know there's been a lot of focus in the past is a shovel ready. Yeah, that'd be great if it is, but everybody knows working with government, doesn't matter how shovel ready you are. It's trying to get through the process to get it there. So that's, that's important, but let's ask questions and make sure you feel good about what you're hearing and what it is. Now, another thing we're gonna get out of this is uh, we're gonna have a C-TAC summary page. That we're gonna get from these guys and they'll talk about it. So just give you heads up, we're gonna use a C-TAC summary page on what they went down through and some of the questions they had. So that also will help us as cog members to vote appropriately and make sure we find what needs to be funded. So please, don't hesitate to ask questions. It's very important to do. Okay.
Okay, just as a matter of numbers for the, as you vote again, there's about nine and a quarter, nine and a half million dollars in applications for this year's cog cycle. And just so you're aware, the award amount, based on the tax revenue that we generated at this point and the project, uh, conservative projection through the rest of this calendar year is seven million eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and five dollars. So that'll be split up through the different projects as, as the scoring takes place. But we just wanted to let the mayors know that dollar amount before we hear the presentation. They're gonna be competitive cycles, so everyone's not gonna get funded, so the mayors ranking them decided which projects are worthwhile and deserve the funding that's available for this year. Moving into the, the C-TAC scoring, we met with the C-TAC last Thursday and went over this and they approved this unanimously across the board of all those members that were there. So for your information and for you to be aware, as you do your scoring, this was included in the email that went out with the agenda. There's three different portions that receive scoring from the C-TAC. One of them is congestion mitigation. There's advanced corridor preservation, there's a safety score. So for the congestion mitigate, congestion score, there's a sheet after this that kinda outlines how those scores came to be. But it's based on if you're adding lanes, if you're widening, things like that, and what, or if you have a high capacity volume to capacity ratio of your roadway. So these numbers are here, they've been reviewed by the C-TAC and approved. And those final scores for this individual section are represented there. There's also points for advanced corridor preservation, and that's for any project that's buying right of way at this time with the intent of not building within that corridor for ten, ten years out. And this year, there were no applications that met that, so everyone there received a zero. We also do a safety scoring. The last two or three years, we've put this out to do a safety analysis. For Dallas Wall, he's with Wall Consulting Group, he does all the safety analysis for UDOT. So he's involved in all those scoring, so we rely on him to, to look at different projects, to use where he can analysis or his professional judgment in providing a safety score for the different projects based on the decrease they have in crashes. And this year, there was also a little bit of points included for those that have points for vulnerable users like bicyclists, pedestrians. So those points were added in as well. And you can see the individual scores that each project received from Dallas there. So when we combine all those points, those scores are represented on that first sheet, and they're also on your score sheet. So when we get to the score sheets, we'll look at those at the end of the presentation, that right column is shown on everybody's score sheet. And that contributes to thirty-nine percent of the, about forty percent of the votes, and there's sixty percent of the vote for the final scoring comes from the mayors here as they rank the individual projects and those are, are added up. I don't know if there's any questions from the mayors. We have this was sent out as well that shows kinda how they look, how the safety now, Dallas with Wall Consulting Group looked at each project. He's on the call as well if anyone has any questions or concerns on that scoring. And again, there's the safe congestion part that Jeff does. So if there's any questions from any of the mayors, we can take those. Now. Okay, here in the non, we'll continue on. Dallas, thank you for, for being here and being willing to try to answer questions if there were any. You're free to, to take off. This year, another responsibility that the C-TAC has is providing more of a technical review of the project. So this year, we kinda changed that up and we did this tracking sheet that allowed the C-TAC and COGS to have to come in and raise questions or concerns with with the different projects. And that was represented in this first column here. After those questions were collected, we allowed the applicants to respond to those questions. So the, hey, this is why we did this, hey, yeah, we accounted for this. And there's a little bit of myself and Jeff went through his COGS step and provided some comments in the last column in regards to those statements, the questions in the statement. So again, this was included in the email and attached to the agenda. And if for some reason you need to get that, you need a hard copy or something, we can get that for you, but again, we'd recommend reviewing this as you're doing your scoring to help understand the project, maybe some of those concerns that were raised by the C-TAC, the city's responses and be able to again, rank the projects to the best of, of everyone's ability so that we're funding what we feel are the best projects in the county and that will benefit everybody. So if there's any, any questions on that.
So we think this is a pretty good way to handle the C-TAC. The, the responsibility they, they have to do a technical review. But I guess we'll welcome your feedback if you think you ought to try a different approach. This seemed to work pretty well where we just pushed out to the individual C-TAC members to review the projects, identify any issues they see. And then document them, log them, and then have the applicant give the chance to respond to it, clarify, provide additional information. And then if needed, cog to kind of provide some notes as well. So I guess if we don't hear differently, next year, we'll assume you're okay with this method of doing a technical review. This is a little variation than when we've done it in the past. But quite honestly, I don't think we've done that great of a job in the past.
Did anybody here, did anybody get a chance to go through this?
Yeah.
Cause I went through it, I was very, it really helped me a lot with some of the questions I had. And it also generates some questions that I'm gonna wanna ask. So I believe, went through it as an executive committee. I really liked what I seen here and the, the information it provides. So if you haven't had a chance, go through it, read it. It'll help you when you're going to rank.
Yeah, um, in, in our executive committee meeting that we have this week in our discussion here, I had forgotten who the members of the C-TAC were. I'm like, oh, they sound really cool and stealthy, right? And, um, well, it's, it's actually, if you wanna talk about who sits on the C-TAC and how people get on the C-TAC, I came out of our executive committee meeting saying, hey, we're gonna have a representative from River Heights on the C-TAC. And the more I think the better in some ways. And, and I think this feedback is, is invaluable. Sometimes you have to read through a bias here or there, but it's invaluable to have that, then to have the staff's feedback and responses there. And, and the fact that this goes back to the city for their response is, is, is really, really valuable. Could you just maybe talk about the C-TAC so that, that everybody here that doesn't understand who sits on the C-TAC for a second would know and understand?
Yeah, so the C-TAC is made up of typically a, a technical person for, for each jurisdiction. Again, we invite each mem, each city gets one voting person on that board and it can't, it can't be the mayor, it needs to be someone else. So sometimes we get cities where they have multiple representatives come to the meeting to provide questions, help do the reviews. But if we ever need to go to a vote, like if there's ever a controversial issue and it goes to a vote, then each jurisdiction gets one. Usually we, it's made up of sometimes city managers, city engineers that they're on staff, sometimes we have consultant engineers in the different cities, if they're acting as the city engineers, city managers. Those people that maybe have a little more of the technical understanding, that do some of this in their day to life to be able to come in. We meet sometimes to do cog issues like this and we review the C-TAC. And there's also times where the C-TAC's utilized with the members of the CNPO, on CNPO issues to review and provide just that technical assistance. So again, for most cities, we have someone that, that represents that city. If you don't know, if there's someone lined up, again, there's a few, I guess, where we have, you know, smaller rural communities, we have maybe a council member, right? They don't have a full-time staff that can come. So if you have a question with maybe who your representative is, or if you have one, or you want us to include someone on those future invites, if you get with myself or Jeff, we can make sure we get that so that you're represented in, in these reviews and other decisions that, and recommendations. Again, the C-TAC really doesn't do anything that doesn't come back to the full cog versus the CNPO for, for final decisions. They're in an advisory board to this group in the CNPO. Anything else, Jeff, that I think that's good?
Anything else?
I think, I think we're good. Unless the mayor has anything else, we could move to presentations.
Yes, I just know that you're all aware, hopefully, in the link, the, the link to project information. So if you go on this website, there'll be one link which is kind of a cut to the chase summary of the, of the project. This is something we tried to implement to just get real get a real clean summary, uh, just a few pages long. And then if you click on this information and application files, you know, here will be all the plans, the deeper dive into cost estimates, basically all the information you might need. Uh, so this will be a good source to go to. Uh, these summary sheets, you don't wanna print them all out for everyone, because it'd be a lot of paper and you can go to them. But I'll pass these around in case you want to look through them as, as the presentations are going on. We didn't print out enough for everyone. I have three sets over here. We'll just kinda pass them around if you wanna uh, look at them for whatever reason, but it's all online. Yes, you wanna?
Yeah, and I can call. Where anybody on the orders are listed here. Again, what we'll do is we'll kinda amount will be first and then we'll go to Hyde Park. So kind of as we switch through, I'll just let kind of an on-deck thing of who's next presentation so that you can have, you kind of be ready. We have all the presentations downloaded, so hopefully, we don't have any technical issues and we can move through, through them fairly quickly. So whoever's here, whoever's presenting for a mouth, I don't know if that's the mayor, Eric or stuff, they wanna come forward and we'll start the process, so.
Good evening, I'm Eric. We got a closer, there's your wings over there, and you can sit down there and go to that slide. Eric, you're still, I represent town of Malaga. Uh, this project has been ongoing for a few years, hasn't it? We try and get it funded every year. And our prior year back in twenty-twenty-one, we almost had the money done for it, but it did, it was about fifty thousand dollars too high. So we put it off another year. Got about forty-five thousand dollars too high next year. So we're coming back for more funding to finish off, off phase two essentially. So we'll see how far it goes. Period. Work fairly well, you tested it. So our prior projects back in twenty-twenty was this, was Main Street right through here. Went for chip seal, hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Put it to bid, it came about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. We put it, put it off a year, tried to bid it again. In that same timeframe, you bid it for a, a phase two project down here. We put this out to bid, went for this in the second, uh, twenty-twenty-two project. This thing came in again, uh, uh, forty thousand dollars too high. So in twenty-twenty-three, we're coming in to refund this project and put this piece here, we initially had, uh, funded prior to last year's project into this project. So it's been kind of a bit of a, of funding to be asked in what the cost and traces. Again, we're trying to fund this project, this, uh, this year, this application. And with chip seal, uh, the roads, it's in pretty good shape. The chips with, with the suffice and improve and make the road, uh, last longer. It's, it's a good road. There's not a lot of cracks in it. Uh, it's very good surface on it. Yeah, just having some polish areas on it. We know chip seal improves security resistance. Uh, it provides an effective moisture barrier, which it does. Chips will do better for roads. They prevent deterioration over time. Uh, the road experienced a lot of tough traffic. And overall, chips though typically need a lower cost and more effective in, or later, uh, on a short term. We're asking about a hundred and eight thousand dollars for doc. Uh, total project cost could be nine thousand dollars. Uh, our hope is we can fund the entire south half project with this application. Uh, again, with, with diesel and pieces of price, it's more things that's we found it difficult to try and tell super. So we've had a little more convincing as part of this. As you can see, uh, the road are typically the shoulder or overrun by truck traffic, tractor traffic. They're part of the shoulders, those leading equipment. They overrun the typical road path of the, of the asphalt. So they never, they hurt part of the shoulders and then you finish it back where they have. Same thing here. Now, we're gonna replace this. This side is replaced, full horizon, and replace it. Uh, same issue down here, the road, the shoulders just overrun, same over here. Same way. Again, these areas should be, they're out the past, put some new asphalt. Uh, yeah, same idea. You can see Dallas, even there's block dragging in there. You can see where the truck traffic, the track is driven along this. They just, it's just, they're just too big for the road. So we're expanding this to a full twenty-foot width. Right now, about eighteen. Sometimes sixteen, seventeen width. So we wanna expand that road to a full width. Any question? Oh, we do have a GoFundMe site, by the way. So please write that down. Any questions on that? What's that?
How's that going?
We got a zero.
So you, you had mentioned that this is a, a, a chip seal project, and then you had mentioned, um, expansion to, to twenty-foot width? What, what were the widths that you were talking about?
Twenty, but uh.
Twenty, but so that would be a separate project later on?
No, this, this initial one was, was the chip seal project.
Okay.
Started on Main Street. Then the secondary, we went for this other south project, and that was, that was expanded and formalization and things. We're trying to go back and fund that second project, this application.
Okay, got that.
What's the total length of this project?
Uh, we are what, mayor? Mile, this is mile, mile and a half. We have full price, probably two and a half, three miles. It's, it's, it's about, it isn't, again, Main Street is, is in good shape. We just wanna put the, the deck and chips somewhere like down with thirty-hundred southies. It's a rougher condition. Any other questions?
So you guys have a road maintenance plan or is the, or is the cog your road maintenance plan?
We use, well, we use county funds to help chip seal.
We have.
Yeah, we have the pass, yeah. Yeah, this, 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 this cog running application process gives us much more to help more to the bank. So that's kind of the kind of, yeah.
Okay, Hyde Park and then Logan will be next.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm Brian Cox for Hyde Park City. Uh, the project that we're proposing is this area of most people know it as twelve hundred east. Hyde Park special, we have different addressing. So it's seven hundred east and Hyde Park. This has been on the project, uh, since I was in the city council. This has been a cog project since I, I think I was in the city council back in two thousand two. This, this road has been as a high priority for transportation corridor. The problem has been is this property was owned by somebody else. And they did not want to have a road going through. This last year, I was able to acquire that property for that road to go through. This road will ultimately take us onto Smithville. This is the cross-section of the road, having full eighty-foot right-of-way with transportation, having the center lane for, for a turn lane, being able to have also our bike lanes and walking transportation corridor in this area. This whole corridor is designed as a transportation, this is one of the transportation corridors. We're doing everything we can to not have people have houses that back up on that. Some of these properties, as you know, there's no way to get out of it, but we're having intersections or buildings, things like that. That's it. This is a designed area to be able to move people with a higher speed and higher thirty, thirty-five miles an hour so that we can get people from, ultimately from Smithville down into Logan area on this road. It'll be a straight shot. This area right here is an area that Logan has, or North Logan has funded. And they'll be working on that. And this is the area that we're looking to get funded. And that would be the last connection, but we've also got some contractors that we're looking to have them hopefully help us with that and, uh, not have that come back to the cog. They've, they've got some development that they're wanting to put in there, so we're wanting to work that direction. Then that would provide us that corridor for up on that east mansion. That's a, that's a great shot for that. Um, little video of this that that's a little more forgiving there. Even though the truck was off the road. This is where I think I need my paint truck repainted. And, but this is where the road would go, is out across that. You also were being connecting, going on up into North Logan. So the big thing is in our, I don't know how to stop this while it's going.
But I'm just really blown away by the quality of the videos.
So in, in that when the safety in the C-TAC, when the safety guy did the safety assessment, they did not assess, we were applying for the road going north and south. They did not assess the improvement that we're going to make on on the the road on this intersection here that goes east. That goes east. That wasn't part of the assessment, but that will be improved, which is that's a horrible intersection. I catch those people that run it. And then twenty minutes later, my kids live up the hill, twenty minutes later, I drive down and I run the same stupid sign. So it's a, it's not a safe intersection and we're looking to improve that as well as that road going. Make that straight shot going north up to Smithville. The overall project is three point five. We've acquired properties as well going into it and then our betterments. So I know it's a, it's a big ask, but this, this has been one that has been I know, ever since I've been working with Scott Sunrise back in two thousand two, two thousand four, this has been a priority for transportation on there. So I appreciate your time. If you have questions, please.
Is that gonna be a bridge in there, is that?
Uh, we're gonna, yeah. It's gonna be tight. It is a, a flood area, so we've got, we've already done the flood plains and you know the size of pipe, so we'll end up piping it. And then we're gonna have some retention in there because you need to be able to retain before we get to the canal. There's a series of retention, that's called Berry Hollow. We have a series of retentions all the way up canyon.
Even you were doing this, you worked out the right ways on extension. You're one of the landowners, you actually negotiate.
Yeah, we actually we actually, uh, own the property there and I got it across there too. So that's, you go to the GIS at Hyde Park City, so we are ready to go with that.
And what's Hyde Park's total investment in this project right now before requesting funding from to sit in the property acquisition and all that?
Uh, we're at ninety percent engineering or a little bit beyond that. I don't know what we've paid on that so far, but we're at ninety percent.
Plus the land?
Plus the land.
What was the land? How much was the land?
The land, uh, we're getting it appraised right now. Do you have an idea on that, Scott? Oh, Josh, I didn't even see you here. He flew in from Florida for this. Maybe from vacation.
I recall the property that's been acquired was, uh, it was over three hundred thousand, it's like three twenty to three fifty. Um, the local match you see there is only for the portion that is either already I'm saying.
Yes, all, all of what I acquired, I cannot use for this match because I acquired all of this back in here and we're not. So the amount that we're local match is here. Two hundred and seventy-two of that is what I can use towards it. I can't use all of it. But there are other parts that we're using. Another property owner down here, Mr. Borlins, Mr. Property, as well as in the, in the, a different name on the, for them, that we're working with.
Do you perceive development taking place anywhere in here?
Yes. Yes. I, I've had to actually, LDS church. LDS church asked about the property.
Well, let me ask this question, would it be better to wait on this and have them see what they're willing? Would require them to put some of this in?
If the development happens. The, that church is already coming to us about other property. This week, I think they're coming to us, so. If they're looking at it, they're looking longer way out there, not. In short term, we've already got a meeting, I think this Thursday, they're coming to talk to us about that property in the southwest part of town.
Josh, also just so you're aware, um, the city has records back from the nineties and negotiating with this property owner as far as acquiring. Right away for the road and development, but. In relationship with development and. So over the past twenty plus years, they haven't been able to come to an agreement between the road and the development. But yeah.
It's, uh. I don't know. And, and the lady didn't pass on and why we. We got the property, so that, that was good. Nothing else changed, we got it, so that was good. Or things drastically changed. Any other questions on this? It's, uh, it's identified as a transportation corridor in our plan and card. So. Alright, thank you. Well, then Hyde Park, sorry, Menden will be next.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name's Sam, local city of Logan, and I'm happy to talk about, uh, our one thousand north quarter today. This may be familiar project for those of you that have been on the cog for a little bit longer, this is, uh, we. Presented for this project back in two thousand nineteen as well and received funding. And I'll talk a little bit more about why we're back today, uh, but just wanna. It is the same project. Um, orient ourselves, this is the tenth north corridor through Logan, so. Um, our project is essentially from about fifty, one hundred east, um, east of Pet Smart, just rather the Pet Smart entrance. Um, west to just through the intersection to fifty-ish west. Um, this corridor, um, a complete rebuild, widening, adding lanes. Um, and then a new, new traffic signal at Second West and Tenth North. And then. The improvements we need to add that traffic signal, north and south. Uh, so there's like Al Sporting Goods, Walgreens and kind of, so. Um, why do we need this project? Uh, tenth north is a phase one project on the CMPL Regional Transportation Master Plan. It's, it's a major priority for the CMPL, uh, as well as Logan City, it's in our master plan as well. Uh, it's a regionally significant road connecting, uh, Utah State. One of if not the largest employers in the valley. One thing I really want to highlight is these two points. We need more east-west connectivity, um, but that east-west connectivity doesn't just help east-west traffic, it also helps manage south traffic. We're all in a wrong situation where Main Street is at or beyond its capacity, allowing users of. To use Sixth West, Tenth West, Second East. Um, these other north-south corridors will help Main Street, but if they can't get to those roads, they don't, they don't help. So having corridors like Tenth North allows people to. Use the, the alternative north-south roads to get north-south until they need to go east-west to the destination, so. I guess I just want to highlight that it helps north-south, but also, um, east-west. Um, the planned improvements on tenth north, this is a super. Buttered. Um, cross-section, but essentially we're adding. We'll have a five-lane road, two lanes in each direction on tenth north, center turn lane and. Probably what will help us the most is, uh. Right turn lanes at Main Street and Second West, so we'll have full movement at each intersection, you won't be waiting behind a car trying to go straight. You want to turn right. Here's a little bit prettier representation, trying to show it, um. One of our big concerns was right away on this project, trying to squeeze a full corridor into a very tight right-of-way situation. So we have had to compromise as a city on what we, what we would have liked versus what we got, for instance. Um, we would love to have on-street parking or bike lanes, or you'll notice we have no park strip on the north side, these are all things that we. Compromised with so that we could maximize vehicle and, and trips. While minimizing cost, minimizing right-of-way impact. Um, here's a little bit more detail that at the intersection of Second West. Uh, tenth north, just showing that we're adding. Left turn straight and through and right turn at each of the legs. Uh, and then tenth north, the up and down. And you go farther, you'll see that the two lanes start all the way to through Main Street to. One hundred east area. Um, schedule. I think this is the biggest win for Logan City. Uh, we have the right-of-way acquired, that has been a, a very hard process, um, much longer than anticipated. We were dealing with a lot of entities that are outside of Logan City, uh, outside of Valley, Princeton, Walgreens, Pet Smart, a lot of HOAs. Who then had to turn around and negotiate with their HOA members. Um, so this, this process took longer than we expected, but we're happy to say that as of this summer, right-of-way is done, design is done. Um, we are shovel ready, yes, um, we've already started the utility re-locations. And we will be bidding the full construction this fall and construction starting this winter. Finance, just good summary, um, like I said, we have a cog grant from. Two thousand nineteen for two point four million dollars. Into, in two thousand nineteen, this number, this. Project amount was three point six million dollars, so it has gone up by three million dollars in the last four years. Um, a lot of that is our right-of-way, like I said, right-of-way took a long time and it was much more expensive than we thought. Uh, I went through our numbers today and we've spent double on right-of-way than what our original estimate was. Um, also, as we're all aware, the construction market has been hard for the last four years. Um, so we are asking for one point five, the other. Half of the three million increase Logan City has come up with from our other budgets. By delaying projects, by, by postponing projects. Um, and so we are looking at a combined match when you average of two matches, if awarded, it'd be about thirty percent match. And we do have betterments beyond this six point three million, uh, waterline, so that we're doing this corridor ones, not, not. Any question?
When you showed the image of this sidewalk out next to the road?
Yeah, this one.
Yeah, I bet your public works loves you.
Uh, it, like, like I said, it's, it's a compromise, we would much rather have this. Um, a snow space, but these are some of the, the compromises that we've had to, had to come up with to save right-of-way dollars. And save space.
So there's a plan for snow removals during?
Yes, Logan City Code will help us, um, and that's a part of our negotiations with the HOAs, I mean, businesses. Along this, this border.
Yeah, thanks, um. How's it looking with the railroad on? Tenth West and this intersection, I mean, if you keep going further west.
That's a great point, so that's another reason why we didn't build this project in twenty nineteen. Um, right-of-way was hard and railroad was hard back in twenty nineteen, we, as you're aware, have projects at fourteenth north, eighteenth north and tenth north. We couldn't do this project knowing that fourteenth north and eighteenth north would be closed to the railroad, so that's another reason we had to delay this project and we wrapped up those projects. Those projects are both going to be, fourteen north is done now. Um, eighteenth north will be done by the end of October, so that'll be done. Um, and then we have a signed agreement with the railroad for the sixth west intersection on this corridor. Um, so all of our previous, um, struggles with railroad are laid out in that agreement, signed and done. And so while not a part of this project's scope, that will be a future project that luckily we've got some. Some resolution to already. Thank you.
Melville will be next after Menden.
I'm in the city, Menden. Uh, this project is third north and this is the project that, that road runs up to Deep Creek Canyon. So our project. Begins at Second West, Third North, which would be a thousand south in the county. This is, this is a phase one of a phase two project, so phase two would be from sixty corner west up to sixty hundred west. And the county goes from here up to, to, to the, uh, Shellhead there, Deep Canyon. So our, our goal. Is to take this first phase and realign this intersection right through here. And then actually take this, this section through here and make sure it's a twenty-four inch wide. Going up to now, it kind of varies right now, the asphalt's kind of back and forth. I just want to make sure that it's the same width all the way through, just, just to get traffic down at the. Uh, road carefully. Again, you kind of see, I've kind of put this, this area on here, you kind of see the road comes up here, I originally suggested going up through here and taking this house out and going this way.
I think that's a good idea.
No, if you pay me enough, that's great.
So we're gonna, we're gonna realign this right through here, make this down through here and take this around here, and also next slider to this property line goes up in that road. Through the road through there, so. And the idea is, is take this, uh, widen it up a little bit, this section through here. Yeah, so it's a full twenty-four width all the way through there, facial shoulders, there's some. Some, uh, wheel path, degradation, the wheels, the, the, the road started to crack, there's some teak in there for the treadmill mechanism there. It is narrow, it's, it's a fun for our director plow. I suppose it's gonna sound like this. There's a lot of use, a lot of, a lot of bicyclists that go up and down this, a lot of trail users. There are twenty-four homes that access the same road, so. And then we have the Men and City for the Road Director. The utility set up on the same road, so there's a lot of traffic back and forth. Yeah, we kind of see, we want to take this, we're gonna straighten this up around the door and get out of this guy's property here. This is the old road right here, this gray area, just right for property there, so again, realign the road, straighten it out. Put a, put a stop sign here, we can pull up there and actually see who's coming left and right, just improving the session, so. I noticed Hyde Park had that fancy drone on there, we had a drone setting up here, but this car came down and took the drone out, so. The county here owns, not owns, but the county is gonna help us. Re, re, uh, reconstruct that canal pathway there, so that, that's part of a cash county project, they'll help us with that. So for the bit ten, the time being, this may be a bit narrow until we get that canal bridge changed out. But again, the county will look at that fixed and repaired. We're asking for about four hundred and three thousand dollars total project cost. And again, we, we had the geotech kind of tell me they want a five-inch pavement on this. Which seems a little thick to me, so we'll forward it to you in the future, we've cost it that way, so we want to make sure we cover whatever geotech represents and if that's what these. The cost, that is like a five-inch pavement, unless. And this is a view looking down. This is a view looking down at Canyon right there, so I feel that's about right through there, so. Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of important project for all those trail users, you know how the trail users are, they like to have the improvements to be able to get the trails ready for, so. Uh, it's a good, it's a. Uh, a good public use though, so, again, four hundred and one thousand dollars was probably the cost. Again, if you kind of see the intersection through here, we're gonna straighten it out, get around there, this canal's got right, correct, there. That's not gonna be into the county, it looks out that. This is looking north. Like two hundred west there, you can kind of see it's kind of narrow. Uh, this one here is gonna tell the tale, if I'm on two hundred west looking south, you can kind of see how it rolls around this back. So we're gonna straighten this out or take a telephone pole out and make this intersection, it's a true tea intersection. Now, this, this also dies off right here, you see these trees down, it dies off, so. We'll increase the width of that intersection there, so if something goes beyond that, there's some room to dash for that. Probably just all the cars down there. And you kind of see, there's some pathways and railway degradation in there. This solely, we're kind of losing, this is a swell right in here. Uh, we're finding that, 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 that earth is moving out towards the dishes, this, this definitely. We're gonna recapture that and recreate this, put a new structure, we'll fix that way. Same thing here, you kind of see that you're making the road, so really, it's kind of a reconstruct, re, rebuild that road. Bit of that paper done there, and that should help us out with future. Uh, Kirk at, uh, Men and City sent me his phone this year, last year. You see, he really enjoys playing that road, it's one lane up and back for still. Uh, not dangerous at all, we just, just wait for your turn, we get down the hill fast, so. This is the upper section, this is phase two. We'll widen that, we'll take the grade down, kind of clean it up, so phase one, we're just a white bottom half of the intersection, take care. Phase two is to widen this up, take the grade down and make this most little sacred.
Any questions?
So I, I took that, this went to. Further west, like to sixty-four?
Yeah, it goes through, it goes through two hundred west to sixty-four west is phase one, phase two is sixty-four to sixty-eight. Let's have a two-phase project.
And where you don't have the same width on. I went out there and it, it, you really can't see it, but on the Cash County GIS you show that there's not as much on the. Right-of-way and it's one of the comments in here, is it just going to. Stay at the same width and just repair what you have?
Or, so if phase are, phase one we would, we're trying to save the same pathway as now. And why do occur on the bend inside, city side? The, the phase two will have to buy right away, that's, that's. The phase one, we'll just try, keep it the same pathway, if we have to widen, we'll just widen on that, that south side.
The objective is to just get recreation there, right?
And the homes, yeah. Just, just a wide enough, it's a, the trailhead is, is a highly used trail. We gotta have people that's safe, especially.
No questions? Okay, thank you.
After Melville log new in.
I'm Corey from the city, we're just looking at, go ahead and. So we're looking at doing a, um. Intersection realignment for alignment. So just to orient everybody, this is the middle of the city office right here, this is our south park, this is going towards Mobile Canyon. Off in city is just up this hill. And if you go down this way and go one block and over here to the, the Maverick, then you're going to die away. Um, so we're just trying to fix that intersection there, so it's for the people going this direction and this direction, so it's not. All messed up. So as far as the need goes, this just shows where, um, there's been a lot of plant in the near vicinity. Um, much of the new growth for both provinces and both will happen. Up, up in here, over here. And so, uh, that intersection gets quite a bit of use now and it's going to increase dramatically. Um, we're working on a design project right now for a road through Mark three hundred south out to the light, and I'm, I'm not very sturdy hands. To the light, maybe at thirty-two hundred south. And so that will be a, a much needed outlet for all these people on the, on the upward bench and they'll all go through that intersection. And currently, the, the middle park gets a lot of use with our splash pad and with the people walk courts. Um, occasionally somebody goes to our city council meetings, so they all go through that intersection if they come from anywhere north of there. Um, this is the, this shows the, the realignment, we already have the right-of-way. Uh, engineering design's done, geotech's done. We have the right-of-way we need and we have a letter of support in offense, it's not a. We have the right way we need and we have a letter of support in offense. It's not a, um, it, it's. It, it will benefit property residents as well. The funding we need to do it, what we're requesting for, I guess a hundred and twenty six thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars. Uh, and we can very quickly, our city's all torn up anyway. So it's some more. So we, we plan to try to bid this fall and have it done by next summer. And, and that's it. Small project, short presentation, but. I know this is a stretch. This isn't the type of line that we're talking about here, but I like that slide. So. And just grateful for all you mayors getting together and talking about roads that, so you're not building bridges and tunnels. That's it. Any questions?
It's the right, current right way with, or, uh, is it three hundred south? Yeah, three hundred south. It goes all the way through.
It's ninety nine.
It's ninety nine. Okay. Um, and then the portion that's in blue, um, is that going to be a ninety net ninety nine foot right away with as well?
Yeah, I think it's ninety nine. Yeah. And that's, yeah, that's a project that's being designed right now.
But Tom, what's, you know, I'll start your head right away on thirty two hundred west side. You only kind of have it wrong. I mean, the width.
Oh, we're there.
So I got one question. Go back to say, so you're saying there's going to be a lot of development in the area, areas?
Yeah.
So why are we looking at that now instead of later to have development to help do that?
The development's not in that area. It's further, further north.
We're not really controlling that interstate.
Thank you.
Part was to make those improvements too, before you open the meat connection that one.
Or yeah, so this, the big development is on the, being considered right now.
Okay, it's nine year old. Okay.
Yeah. And then in confidence up here.
I just looked hundreds of new homes built in this area, I thought. Okay.
Just in this, in this development here.
Yeah, could, could I ask a, a question? Sorry. Is, um, to me, it just seems like this has potential to be a major core work for, for this area to get traffic east and west. Um, my question is, is it smaller project? Did, did you guys scale down the project in order to, to minimize funding? Or is that legitimately what you need right there to make it?
To fix that intersection, that's what we need.
Okay.
The much bigger project is the cogment that we got last year for the design of this. And when we come back in the future years to try to fund the actual bridge and an outlet, because you're right, it's a major. It's a major outlet for the mobile bench.
What's the width of the resting three hundred side? Seven eight foot?
It's, it's.
All ninety nine?
It's ninety nine, but I mean, it's not ninety nine now, right?
It's pretty narrow. Or it's very narrow though.
But the right of ways, ninety.
Right. And we get the sewer down and everything.
Yeah, afternoon nibly, you'll be up for presentations. Hey, it's Alan Newton. As, as, um. Is working towards a center street of new project. The center street wants. The town park, it also houses the fire station, the town library. It was the old school back in the day. So quite a disservice. Our project is, is a center street project, re-improve that. We all be the city of Austin sits here. This is the LDS church, the LDS church of all those that work. Towns park is behind them. Available there. Also town park right down here. So it's a good place for us to improve, widen. That section in there. So we can have safer access. The S ran as bicyclists, uh, users. There's a town market right here that people are grateful to. So. Very central locations where improvement, we need to widen that kind of fix. Um, the old road is, you can kind of see it's kind of degrading. It's on a part. This is, this is the city of Oakland right here. You can see some degradation, a little raised surface there. And the people who have overrun Center Street, they've, they've taken that right hand turns, they head south on Center Street and they've run over one of. The road now about, about six feet. So the idea is to widen the sections for us and was consistent through that, that section. Uh, we're going to, this is the widening area section right through here. These areas you go and improve and, and fix the approaches. So those properties. And this is the, the town park right here, the parking area, parking lot. It is correct, it's better than the water. We are here to go attach to. Down that line right there. Kind of fix that. So we kind of land there on this new improvement. Now the asphalt right now, it has a nice crown to it, but it dips and it crowns again. So we want to readjust the drainage. So it actually hits. The curb law right here and there's a storm being right down there. Black catch a little bit with it. Right now it kind of pawns up and kind of sits there. It kind of degrades the asphalt. So. The idea is to pulverize, pulverize what's out there right now. Recreate it, kind of re-strap, just full, a full width crown, all twenty feet of that. You know, put down that, that new asphalt on it. We're asking about a hundred and, hundred and seventy two thousand. So it probably costs a hundred and seventy thousand dollars is what the car request is. I threw this picture in right here. See back in the old eighteen nineties, it was a well-used road. It's still well-used, but now we've improved it. So. All you history, history does so.
Don't they still pull wagons and horses and?
They do. They, yeah, they do. Yeah. So the road needs improvement. I mean, again, you kind of see some pictures here. The road is degrading some, some fatigue brand in there. The shoulder on is kind of falling. I took this this morning. You guys have overrun the, the road itself. I feel like kind of widen this or assist a cross. Your UDOT came through and did the chips on this, you had the chips on it. Uh, they kind of service that for us. So kind of start the block today. This initiative, anyway. Uh, yeah, I'm sad by the town market, town market's about early here. You kind of see the road in here. Uh, when they came in, they shipped this, they, they blew the ships in this year and filled up the, the edge on that. It was kind of a drop, about a three inch drop off between the asphalt and the parking lot. Should bump off of that, bump back up again. So. Those folks who were looking, I believe, had a hard time traversing that. So. Uh, this piece here, you can kind of see, this is in front of the town hall. We want to take that piece there, line it right. It's been through there. This is about the same width through there to here. So. Again, all apart, the cheap bragging road is not in great shape. Uh, you can kind of see some cracks here, some ones to, and some changes in bearings and stuff. This is down by the town park. Here's the parking area, the park. Yeah, the asphalt, the park, I'll get it back. And this is that area that's kind of depressed in there. So idea is to re-crown this road and catch this water sort of in the curb better and have it go south. It's a way to swan. Over here, I'm looking north. You can see this is the inside of the road. Same idea is not great shape. Just going to re-service it, reconstruct it, put a new, uh, new, uh. Structure into it, new road base, and just pack it back down and get a good, good goat structure. Yeah. So. Amen. How about questions? And this is a real picture, by the way, eighteen ninety two. Great. So yes, they use the roads many, even many, or usually get a good structure on it now. So.
Eighteen ninety what?
Eighteen ninety. Back in the day, back when I was born, right there. Any questions? Good project. Yes.
I think you had on there that your car request amount was one seventy. Well, that was a total project cost. I did one fifty six in your application just to make sure that.
So that let me six.
Yeah, we've one fifty six. So your total cost is one seventy.
Yeah, the script.
Probably. So I think your total cost and then your common question amount.
Oh, that might be.
It was a one sixty six. That was mayors or if they review the sheets and they have one fifty six listed.
That's what it is. That's my age right there. Eighty ninety old. So you understand that, right? Okay. So any more requests on that one yet? Okay, awesome. Thank you. After a little more, then you'll be.
Well, thanks. When I, when I played off my bike and came in here, I realized. My worst nightmare was about to happen. I'm going to stand up in front of a group of people with wet pants. I assure you, it's an outside job though, not inside. And the boss told me I had to keep coming back and talking about these projects until I finished. The job. And so I'm here to talk about something familiar, which is twelve hundred west. And so as we worry about and try to solve congestion problems on US eighty nine ninety one to Logan. Uh, it's not a difficult engineering proposition to realize. Add more wires, um, here on tenth west, uh, first west, uh, second east. As we talked about fifty to a million last year, right on the UDOT project. That. And so this is the, this is the way we get all the way from Hyrum. To the Logan, uh, Cash Airport by computing, completing this tenth west, uh, through Nibley. And so it's all about congestion mitigation. We've been planning for twelve west since I was on the planning commission. Twenty two years ago, when the city manager said, see this road. We're going to acquire the right of way that we need to with development. We're not going to allow. We're not going to allow driveway access under there. So it's been in our transportation master plan for more than twenty years. It's in the cog transportation master plan. Talk more about that. And it's designed to be a thirty five mile an hour commuter road with active transportation. We've done this in phases. Phase one, thank you very much. You funded to align twelve west. South of thirty two hundred south and north of thirty two hundred south. Uh, with the survey correction, plus there's a nice roundabout there. Uh, last year we talked about and requested funding for phase three, four and five. And you gave us, thank you, the money for three and four. And there was a partial funding for phase five. And so we turned that money back to go to, uh, another project down the list. To come back this year to talk about phase five. So phase three and four update. This is phase. This is phase three with a roundabout there. This is phase four. Um, this is the hard part of the project to talk about. We've bid both phases in July of twenty twenty three for construction. And as we've noted, construction costs have. Done some crazy things in the last few years. And so, um, despite having a ninety percent engineering design, when we came and asked for funding last year. We didn't have enough money to do both phase three and phase four. So we did not award the phase four construction. We have awarded phase three construction and. Um, we estimate that to be done June thirtieth of next summer. Here's the ask on the base. Let's just call them three and four together shortfall. It's down here at. About five hundred thousand dollars. Which is, uh, eleven point five percent of the project cost minus the local match. So that's what we suffered. In inflation. And that's why we're coming back asking for more. Do I get ten minutes since I'm talking about two? And I'll still try to get to five. If we get, if you will give us the extra money for the shortfall. We can actually still get this project done by the end of the summer next year, a year from now. So. The design is solid. Um, we have great bid estimates. It, I mean, it's, it's been bid. So we're ready to, to go to work on it and be done by this time next year. Phase five details, if we move into that, that's this, this part here, which. Beers us to the west or to the east to pick up. Uh, one thousand west in Logan. And that's, that's how we get the connection all the way through. Uh, there's a little bit of road left to be done, which will be done with development on a. Development agreement already signed, uh, with Firefly Estates is the name of that project. We also want to go back into phase five and pick up a little bit of bike path there. We have. Active transportation with separated bike path and then, uh, walking trails as well. Right? So phase five is shown here with that little bit of bike path to pick up. Um, if we get the award, we have, uh. No need to acquire right of way. Uh, the design is complete and. Uh, is currently being bid with updated costs from three and four phases. And based on this year's pricing. So that comes to one point eight million for phase five. And again, fresh estimates based on construction bids from phase one. Really good news is we could have this one done as well if it's funded by the end of next year. So. Uh, we're ready to pull the trigger. If we talk about planning, um. I really like to go back to. You know, what did we ask the citizens of Cash County when we said, why don't you give us a quarter of a percent of your sales tax? And. The question was, should we take money from you for transportation projects, corridor preservation, disaster mitigation? And so on and so forth. And so it's good for us to stay grounded, I think, on what, on what we asked people when they started. When they willingly gave us their money. So this is the cog transportation master plan that we adopted. The date that's spinning on the web is July tenth, twenty twenty three. This is phase five of, uh, uh, twelve hundred west that we're talking about. So that has a score. A favorable score of about ninety two. Next one down, you can see at eighty two. This is the phase five. We didn't know about the five hundred thousand cost overrun on base four. So that was not part. I mean, phase four was already in, in our minds, a complete project, funding wise at that point. Uh, this is the top three. If I sorted it right, just so you can help me. I've got. I've got a C tax score of thirty for Logan and, uh, tied with, uh, the phase three and four shortfall. And then number three, uh, would be the, uh, phase five of twelve west.
Looks correct.
Okay.
Well, I remember if I'm wrong, I'll.
It's, so. Um. That's the end of the presentation. Schedule recap was really excited about, again, phase three done in June. We could have this all wrapped up a year from now. Sorry about the overrun. It's the day that we live, the day that, you know, we're just dealing with that. And. We've done some soul searching and, uh. We're back asking for more. I'll get that. Questions, yes?
You know, what's your, uh, your thoughts as percentage of traffic that that'll take off the main roads now?
So. Is that in the. Transportation plan? Do we have quantified numbers on that?
I don't know that we have direct. Quantifying number, quantifying numbers, um. I mean, we, we know the historical problems we're facing. We try to bundle everything to our mains. We, we've kind of done that. To not very good success. So. These kind of parallel roads like twelve west, like wolf pack way are to give some robustness to that. So. Because eventually those main streets, that's our whole approach. Is to funnel everything down to main street. The highway is nine ninety one. So this, this. Does provide that robustness. Uh, how much it offset, I don't know. We could probably try to model that and figure it out. Uh, one thing we know is kind of no matter what we do, because our main streets are so saturated with travel demand. That to some degree, if you get new capacity, it just fills in. So it doesn't. That's why even when we built tenth west. You didn't see much of reduction on main street from that, even though it was a booming success. And, and helps overall delay and overall kind of efficiency and mobility. But it, it didn't reduce main street traffic. And that's just because we're so. The travel shed is so saturated, it is filled in.
I would say this would be pretty much like tenth west.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, or what that way, yeah, gateway drive, for instance.
You know, you. So this is a, this is the growth area definitely for Nibley. The growth in Nibley, uh, is to the west. Uh, we're, we're sort of up against the mountain, Kaido Farm and so on on east. Um, Strata, uh, multi-family in Logan is, is about here. And you can see there's already lots of houses in Hyrum. That, you know, what a great idea. That, you know, what a great idea to come this way and take these parallel paths instead of trying to get everybody in there's. East west.
Like I drew is drive tenth west. You can see the traffic on there. If it wasn't there, it would be on Main Street. The catch is gonna be is if we do this other stuff, then you put a twenty five mile an hour speed limit. That's where we're getting our problems and our problems. And that's we've had some problems in the passes on these roads. You go and put them in as an alternative. And then the community's complaining, cut it down twenty five. It's no longer a good thoroughfare.
So this is a thirty five, thank you, Mayor. That's this is a thirty five mile an hour design with chicades and full bounds. Along with active transportation, so it's it's made to make people feel like they want to drive thirty five. Now, I wanna wanna point out, since we're talking about tenth west, I live over here. And I come to about here to go to work, and tenth west is my favorite route to get to work. And even though we still have some things to solve on Main Street of Logan. There's a lot of cars still in the same way that I'm going at the same time, and I look around and I say. All these cars would be on Main Street, because I used to be on Main Street with tenth west.
To be fair, Larry only goes to work twice a week.
I have three jobs.
No, I was just going to make the comment about the speed limit too, that, you know, that would make it more desirable if it's raised stuff like that. And I do appreciate the planning that's gone in to ahead of time. To base the houses away from the road and make it so that it's. You know, attractive to have traffic come through there and not have houses facing the road.
Yeah.
So it's been good and and the road gets used a lot until we get to the dead end. That that part that we're ready for, but.
Let's fix.
Okay.
So the speed limit is twenty five.
Right now, the speed limit is twenty five because it hits a dead end. And we also, I will fully admit that. In Nibley, south of thirty two hundred south, that's also at twenty five. We've got the new traffic data. Which will justify, right, Tom? It will justify, this is the mayor talking now, will justify thirty five.
I thought the cog grant justified that. You would have to justify why it wouldn't be.
I'm talking about stuff that's already built south of thirty two hundred.
Is that?
To raise the speed limit thirty five.
Oh, from twenty five to thirty five, because yeah, because when I hit that twenty five, I could pretty much have my nails painted and dried by the time I get. To the roundabout.
I guess the thing is, is there some assurance that that would happen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Like how much of an assurance?
And and again, the construction though, north of thirty two hundred south is thirty five mile an hour. Once we get it finished, that's that's where we anticipate. Mayor.
I am, um I don't know if anybody else is thoroughly confused about. Um phase one, two, three, four, five, what has not happened, what's been funded, what's been given back? Well, again, so if we could walk through that and understand um. Just where all that's at.
Phase one is complete. That put in a roundabout at thirty two hundred south and twelfth west. And fixed a serious misalignment problem. That's very appreciated because we all know that thirty two hundred south is now. Being realigned at eighty nine ninety one and will have a signal attracted to. So this roundabout is very valuable. That's done. Phase one is funded by the cog. And that that is complete.
That Ted's corner?
Sorry?
Ted's corner?
There'll be a light just north of Ted's. Yeah, so they'll close the access at Ted's when it closes, when the new signal wills and is offered.
Ted's staying there.
Environment process mitigation underway, which the state is in charge of, but they've had to go to court to try and get. Ted to pay for their state mandated mitigation. Again, there's a whole plan. You go online and see the whole plan by a west ministering at. Um under the jurisdiction of the state, but they have had a, even with the order in place, they had a hard time getting compliance from Mr. Ted.
Okay, so phase two.
So phase two and three here.
So you got three and four, what's two? I think two was dropped into one.
Two, this was actually phase one and two. Can you speak up for us?
Phase two was just more of a roundabout.
Yeah. That may be an error in preparing the slide. So this was phase one and two.
Okay, and phase three, where are we at?
Phase three is right here.
Okay.
And that's another roundabout at twenty six hundred south and twelfth west. Um on the east side of twenty six hundred south.
Is that, is that done?
High school.
Is that, is that done? Is that roundabout done?
It will be done June twenty twenty four.
Okay, so that is, and that was funded by the cog?
Yes.
Okay, so it's funded by the cog and um but it hasn't been started yet.
Tom, go ahead.
We have a contract with construction that that is going to start.
Okay, and then phase four?
Phase four was awarded by the cog in the last funding cycle. And when we bid the contract. Uh we realized we were short by five hundred thousand dollars. So we have not awarded the phase four construction contract. Instead of it come back. Asking for more money.
And then, so that was, that was part one of your ask today, and then phase five.
Correct.
And we're, um phase five is just a new ask.
Correct. Phase five was also requested last year. But as you remember, it was funded partially, but we ran out of money as we went down the list. And so rather than. Take that and complicate things, we withdrew our request on phase five last year.
And on phase five, you said you were gonna pick up the active transportation back there. Does that mean the entire corridor will have active transportation with? By picking up that one spot?
Yes, correct. Yep. With bike path and pedestrian path. Yeah, and we'd love to talk to you guys about the. And west part of that and about continuing that. Yeah, that's a lot of phases, a lot of sorting through all that. Awards and shortfalls, get money back, stuff like that.
The cross sections. Eighty foot right away, great. That's good, but having twenty two feet of asphalt. For autos. I just. No, having that raised medium is is really. Long-term committing not not provision for the future, having that raised median for the bikes, whereas you're. Yeah, so I think that's.
It's not a race, it's not a race median, it's a Jersey barrier separation. So if we decide in. Dom, if I'm all basically, we have CRS here. To Jersey Barrier.
What is a Jersey barrier?
It's the things that you see.
I know it's got, it's got it in last in phase three and four, it's just, it's a narrow road. It's so when. When Lynn, Mayor Payne, asked, is it like Wolf Pack Way? Absolutely not. We have a bike or or active transportation, but it is not included in the road.
See, when we live on that side of the valley, we don't see this.
Three lanes, like a middle and then one in each direction?
I'm gonna have the engineer speak to that.
Uh how many, what are the, what's the lane? Is it two lanes or I mean, two lanes and a median, a middle term?
How many roads, crossroads are there for people to cross? That's why you don't have a middle lane, is because you don't have a lot of intersections coming in.
There's about three plus the roundabout. Crossroads. So here's the Jersey barrier. Here's the uh, uh it slopes from that, right? So it's crowned here. Uh this is the bike lane, this is the pedestrian, this is the pedestrian. And this is the two travel lanes for twenty two feet. So there's no parking. There is a section with non-streets, so this is the narrow one. Thank you for listening.
After that, Logan will have paradise.
All right, our project is the six hundred east finding and path installation spot implement request. Um just to kind of orient you where this is. Um it begins in the island on the south end and goes past Logan Regional, past the Space Dynamics lab. And then it goes behind, this is immediately behind um. At Valley Hospital and Greenville Elementary, and it ultimately will. Our new city offices will be just north of this project. Um ultimately, it goes all the way to two hundred south in Hyde Park. That's the extent of six hundred east. Um it's designated a major collector road. Um obviously, it has connections to all those locations. Originally, this was the plan for what two hundred east is today, but there happened to be a mayor that has a house on six hundred east. So that number came to fruition, but it is a major thoroughfare as it connects some of those big um locations. So it's about four miles long. Uh so the current condition is pretty bleak. Um we currently have gates on either side of six east. On either side of this project, both at twenty two hundred north and then at twenty five hundred north. Uh it's single lane, it's a pretty rough road, uh has no base, just it's just shit on top of the base. Um and then, so it has gates that come down during those school hours, when school starts and when school ends. That restricts it to vehicular travel, um so that the kids have a safe route to school. Um yeah, it's just not a great place, Raker, but right now, oh, and. Um so a big priority of this project is to make sure that we have a removed path for those kids that are going to um Greenville Elementary. And it will provide bike lanes and safe pedestrian access. This project kind of comes up because we have a development immediately east of this rope. That will come in and um contribute to the to the portion that they're facing there properly. It works before. There you go. Uh so this is kind of shows you the cross section. It's a little bit difficult to read, but. Um everything will be installed on the um east side of the road. Um we'll have a removed path of. You know, bike lane and then the the roadway itself, and then the east side path will be installed at a later date. Um. Um so this is for construction only. Uh it will tie into, like I said, that twenty four hundred north. If you see where that ends right there, that's because there's a development coming in right here that will put in this road and connect it to twenty five hundred north. Um so this is kind of, we're seizing the day with the development or development that's coming in. Um and then we'll not have to gate this road to provide safe access for those kids. Um our funding. Uh we are willing to put our money where our mouth is. We're asking for um three hundred thousand today. And we're contributing three hundred ninety five thousand for this project, so that is um. A, let's see, sorry, that's a fifty seven percent match or a fifty seven percent contribution. Um and this is ready to go. All, we've done all the property rights acquisition necessary for this. Uh and we anticipate construction will begin in May, actually, June or April. Any questions?
Mayor?
Yeah.
We go back and picture where the development is gonna be?
Sure.
So you said it's development down there, where they're in lines.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, are they really putting the entire road in, although unfortunately they have to issue?
I think that's.
Address that? So they really think I think for half, that's all they require.
How far south does that go? Is that just for the north portion that you're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah, and then just kind of so you know, just off this map, up here is where the city offices are going. We're installing six east right there, so it will connect to our Hyde Park border right there.
That's what I'm trying to understand. So we drank money for this. You get half from development on one side and expect development on the other side to get to their half?
Yeah.
Okay.
Will you be building that? You said you're building it further north. Will you be connecting it up to the road?
That's our plan. Yep.
Most, most mayors don't know. That's the fifty east in Hyde Park. Uh that some council members had a problem with long ago, and you know what I'm talking about, so. But, good, good, it's a road.
All right, any other questions?
We're speaking in.
Providence, you'll be up after paradise.
We have with Paradise Town. Um we're working on, our project we're looking at doing is about. Chip seal, trying to save some of our roads and have them last a lot longer than uh. Uh by actually doing our chip seal versus just letting them go and then having them. Uh come in and do a full project of of rebuild. Um we're looking at, our total cost is sixty four. Thousand two hundred sixty, we're requesting about fifty nine thousand five hundred. Forty seven sixty in our local match. Where we're, where we're working at, looking at doing is we have a couple of different locations. Uh at the top of the page, you know, how to use the pointer, but we'll give that a whirl. Uh right there, that's eighty seven hundred south, goes down to the west, so it's off Highway one sixty five. And then heads uh west to the corporate limits. Uh we're also looking at doing this portion right here, which is just coming off of the state road, also one sixty five. Heading to the corporate limits and a little uh tongue here. And then we have a little portion of ninety three hundred south that uh heads back up to first east, which is on COVID X. Inside our corporate limits, but as we get outside our corporate limits, it heads on south to Avon. And then uh nine thousand south from about one fifty west. To about one hundred east. On uh nine thousand south. And so we're just looking at trying to uh have that asphalt last as long as possible. We have some pictures. A lot of the roads have uh a lot of spider wagging on them. Uh they're starting to show a fair amount of wear. And by actually chip sealing those, we can extend that wear, so you know, you'll notice a couple of these. And by actually chip sealing those, we can extend that wear. So you know, you'll notice a couple of these uh first and others. Uh we've done this in the past, a couple of different times and have been able to add quite a bit of light uh to our existing roads and be able to do that at a lot less expense than coming in and just pulverizing the start of much work again, so. Uh this one, same same kind of thing. You can see right there at the bottom, a lot of that spider webbing. Uh and we feel that that will be able to pull those together and get this by the end of extension, so.
That's an indication of drainage. Do you have a drainage problem here?
I'm gonna say that.
Right here? Yeah, that that's an indication of wash or or water needs to grow, it's causing to do that.
Some of that, yes.
So are you are you addressing that?
Yeah, we'll take we'll take a little bit more off the sides and the shoulders, try to get us back to a swale. We have some of the folks that is they landscape, they have a tendency to kind of come in here and and come in with the slope right to the road. Instead of leaving the inswales, we'll work with some of that and pull that out. We've actually had some luck in the last, probably been up last year, the previous year, we took some oops, let me go back here where we're at. We took some roads that had that spider webbing. I heard somebody in the background say that and then hold that together. I don't know who said that. Uh we didn't think so either. Um but it's been able to hold that together. Uh I doubt it's something you'd see on like fifteen, uh maybe even on Main Street Logan, but in Paradise that seems to work.
They're saying you don't address the water issue.
No, yes, you'll you'll have to address the water issue on the side, yes. But you can still, by chip sealing, it'll help pull that together if you keep the water off of that, yes. Any other questions? Thanks.
Richmond will be up next to your presentation.
I'm Ryan Snow with Providence City. And uh I don't know how anybody else got their mayors to do it, but I pulled a short straw. Just come back. I pulled a short straw. And uh so I'm up. He's a
Oh, she comes in now.
Yeah.
Take it from here.
Better than I am, so um but uh anyway, we'll give it a try. And uh so anyway, just to kind of give you an idea of where our project is, um this is a this is gateway, this is gateway drive, the purple one, uh Highway one sixty-five. So it's just a slight piece right between here. Um if you go down, we have uh we completed this project last year with the cog funds. We did this one the year before with city funds, so we are trying to improve our east-west corridor. Um and that's what this is just a uh spot proven right next to the um so tractor supply, if you know where tractor supply is. Um right here uh is our chick play coming. So we'll need that to get chicken play out to the road, gateway drive. And so anyway, um that's what that's that, what's that?
I was like, what?
Yeah, well, that's where the next chicken play will go. Um they've got
Hey, you said enough, Brian. You can sit down.
So anyway, that's what we're looking for. Um they do have acquired property in the site and so it is, that is where they're coming, so anyway. And uh just a couple of kind of facts about the project. Gateway Drive uh has been built there. Um so first north, first south. Um so a lot of the projects right around, and this just leaves this one little spot. Um right, uh go back up. So this right here is is going to be done by the developer right next to our project. So we'll just have these two pieces of property. Um and uh so but they are, so this one is a house there and so it's fully developed in the house here and that's their property. And so they're they are both developed, although this one has a lot of backyard. Um but uh both of them are developed blocks. So then our funding. So we're figuring it's going to be about uh three hundred um sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and that we're asking for the three hundred thousand. Uh that puts us to the nineteen point nine percent match. Um so anyway, we are also willing to put our money in. Um it is going to have a sidewalk on the south that will connect our sidewalks all the way up to our Providence Elementary and our uh uh Spring Creek Middle School. We are already adding a pedestrian activated light here, which is part of the project, but that will help us to connect all of these um schools and safe routes as we connect over in the so anyway. Another couple of little ones kind of shows you where it's at. Um and how much we're looking to expand and then uh our our amount of widening and then the uh um the extra center median light, the center turn light and the sidewalk that'll connect and complete us all the way. So anyway, that is a project and that's it. So we
Yeah, I'll ask you a good question because I actually actually really appreciate this, um because I buy a lot of chicken food for my dear wife. And if I actually, when when I'm trying to go south on one sixty-five, I go through that residential neighborhood, up through your nice roundabout, go south by a block so I can pick up the traffic light. Am I bothering those people? Because it seems like that's kind of a residential by its stream.
Through the through forty forty-five, it's our, it's actually still part of Gateway Drive. We'll have bike lanes that have just been pinned in on there. So if you were bothering before.
Yeah.
But it's fine. Appreciate your, appreciate your business.
Okay, thanks. And you know what I'm talking about. Come in a crash flight, go east, go to the roundabout, go south by a block, turn right to get to the lights at twenty-one hundred south.
So we've added bike lanes to that one to hope to keep uh traffic off there or park um off the
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
But enough of Richmond will be frightened.
Chris Slater, I'm glad to be here to give a little overview of the Richmond City. One hundred in west and one hundred fifty north road projects. Just get a quick overview here of the map. So uh the project would include building a new roadway. Here, as you guys may be aware, there's a new lease market here. Uh this road right here is a gravel road, comes down and goes this way to about here. And it has some asphalt on it, it's very poor poor condition. So this project um is needed really to improve safety would be the top reason. Uh many of you are probably aware, there's a signal you got at this intersection. But um there is no signal over here. So by providing a better way for traffic to come this way, the hope is to you know, lessen the amount of traffic that come this way and make left-hand turns and promote a different path coming this way, go this way. And it's also needed to help for some future high density development that was So it's approximately eleven hundred eighty feet long, uh gravel roadway and six hundred thirty feet of we build way down at the bottom. So it's next door here. Uh geotechnical investigation's been done. In fact, the design is ninety percent or more complete. And as part of that, of course, the geotechnical investigation is done to prepare a cross-section of the road upland, just the asphalt and hundred base course, that's going to be second base course. As I mentioned, in the general plan that was recently updated this past this past year, um there's this new oops, I'm sorry. This new land use area um up there just behind where that inside density area right here. Yeah, probably. So right here, here's the highway, comes through town. And this is Main Street right here, sorry.
So Lee's that big red square right there.
Exactly. This is the ease. This new roadway would be right here that would come start. So Lee's, when they came in, they built a new roadway from the highway down to that brown area. This project would build a new roadway through that brown area, which is uh currently with, it's in the county. But as that area develops, it would be annexed and that's for the city that the city has had conversations with the county about this roadway, worked out the the uh details as far as that the city would maintain this new roadway. Um and then it would come down and it would shoot down this way through the main street to connect here. Does that help? Alright, um so uh Richmond recently, as I mentioned, uh finished the general plan for the new general plans for the city. As part of that, they did some public outreach and asked a few questions, kind of gauge, you know, how this plan should be developed and outlined. And one of those questions was, you know, where did, where do you feel um new development should occur or will occur? And this area here, these areas that are red or these hot colors um are areas that were more identified for future growth. This again, this is right about where Lee's is. And so that area that was discussed, that I mentioned for the high development housing will be in that area. And so this roadway would obviously would play an important part as far as with that traffic. Also, in the general plan, a question was posed of which areas of the, which roadway areas do you feel are in the poorest condition? And again, this area showed up as a result of, sorry. Showed up as a result of that question, here's a high, some responses there on that piece of road that will be rebuilt as part of this. So again, the project would include um rebuilding a section road here. Showpiece and then new roadway up to Any questions?
Do you have a timeline of when you think that high development will come in?
Um, yeah, for sure. So great question. Um it's not even in the city limits. So we've had no conversations in that section. The future use map was adopted in May. We've had, as I said, we've had no conversations in the long time. That we have had conversations with a developer that owns the piece that's north of the, I don't want to call it paved. It's like uh it's a rabbit trail. Um but he backed away because it's not feasible under the current law. I do think that he will eventually come in and develop that. Um I think the way to manage that, I think the city should increase its match. Because I, he's going to have to put a road in both, I'm talking about the piece that goes north. He's going to have to put a road in on both sides. I think we could work with them and have him cover a greater amount on the on the northern border of this piece that we increased our match by like fifteen percent, something like that, so we just spare. Or is it the uh the land that's in the county, again, it's just not certain. It went to the county council in August. They're aware of it. Um it's about forty percent of the project. On both sides is active farmland. To anybody's guess, it's a great question. Just, I don't have an answer.
So this new road is in the county?
Forty percent of it is just a piece.
Is it there is, is that a brand new road there?
There's to to the westernmost border of Lee's, yes. So Lee's put that into the property. But from there, it's a farm for that.
So mathematically, that road is to help Lee's out there.
So Lee's installed this road here, then they're built, constructed this road here.
It's hard to argue that it won't help Lee's, but our concern is just, there are people driving down this dirt road every day. Pedestrians on the dirt road. You know, the the highway is a high volume, high speed. It, we're concerned about, you know, we knew this when the when it went in, UDOT allowed them to have two accesses and that's fine, but there's no metering of the speed. You know, they come over the hill where the stoplight is and head down the road. There's no way for pedestrians to to go north because there's no sidewalk. It's on a steep slope into the property. That that could be improved, so like I mentioned, it's hard to argue that they won't benefit. But for the community, the safety of it will put a sidewalk in. Uh we don't even plow this area yet. Because the road's
So what is, what what are people using that or roads to get to, this road?
Right now?
Yeah.
It's mostly a farm trail, farm equipment. Since Lee's has been in though, they're going down the road so they don't have to go on the highway. Turning the corner and going up into the backside of Lee's, going back that way. You can see the, about a third of the city is on the south, the west side, most of them going down that road and then turn up to Lee's. So you know, the congestion's already
Might just add, um unless my wife wants to put an apron and get a Pepsi. We go that way to go to Trenton and come out of these, we just pick that there road to the cars. And it's a trail.
Right, definitely.
Another thing on that road, when you go on a highway, turning in the lead, you actually have to go in to the turning lane to go west off the highway with the light. So it's like places like in Logan, you go, you got people coming into the same area, which creates a pretty risk right there if I'm coming traffic. And there's quite a few cars coming from the west to these with stupid access.
I've been, I live on the east side. I come down the road by the vet clinic there at one hundred north. It's not uncommon to be three deep trying to turn. And it's just a matter of time before somebody has a major accident, they're turning into uncommon traffic. Our hope with this is that it then will reduce those numbers of people turning from the city, you know, like cars coming in and going south. There's no way to know that. There's a very small section that could be developed. I could think the right thing to do would be to increase our matches, I mentioned. But as far as what's in the county, that's all on brown. It's just, there's just no telling that we, you know, how soon it will be answered. Getting off the highway is interesting. Well, one other thing I read, maybe in, just to help the budgeting, we would be more than willing to break it into two businesses. This, so half now and try again for the second part. No, we would just
Probably Jake, because we need to add a government on there. I didn't know we could do this.
Alright, uh although you don't know me, I'm Jacob and so I'm going to spend the trend today. I appreciate all the previous presenters for being so quickly slapping. Uh so Ben is presenting a eight hundred south from eight hundred east to eight hundred twelve hundred east. Which is this first orientation. This is downtown Trenton, right here, you know, the city hall, and this is where our previous two projects were. And down here, it's about four blocks were dilapidated, uh unsafe condition. The existing roadway, as far as the asphalt goes, this is narrow as sixteen feet in places and is intended to be a two-lane road. Uh which is, as you can all tell, is in unsafe condition. I can't ask your car driving at the same time. Uh the existing edge of asphalt is deteriorating on both sides of the road. And slopes from the edge of the road are as steeper than theirs own uh standard of a minute, so it's steeper than Um this is the basic uh plan. It's going to be a base, a very basic design. All of the intersection at eight hundred east. It's four hundred east. And it's going to be twenty-four feet or twenty-two feet of asphalt and uh two for the gravel shoulder.
I might add, if I may, the reason we've not addressed this road in the past is West Cash had an open ditch running right next to it. More than from one end to the other. And the slope of the ground, but that that anything that's sudden, underneath the road. So it was almost a waste of money for us to go in and repair that thing every year. But this year, they put the pressurized system in, there's no longer a ditch, now it makes sense to go in and make a walk.
I was as further ask, uh, engineering and geotech, construction, uh, and construction management.
You go back, again, the match comes out of that, two seventy-seven, so the request would be for the two fifty-five. And some change. For the application, so again, some of those numbers get messy, but okay, that's how you'll see it on your reviews and on. It'll be the two fifty-five. And some change, so.
Um, so in total, this project will increase safety capacity throughout Trenton and neighboring communities. Uh, trends outside the urban area and then fall back to rural side side. And the construction should be ready to start early this next year. Are there any questions?
And Wes Cash is loud, so did you?
They put a pipe in for it.
You don't know what it took to do that. Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
So we set aside a certain percentage for the rural?
Yes.
What would that amount be? Out of the seven million that we.
So for this year, the rural set aside is. Eight hundred ninety-six thousand. Four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. What's that number one more time? So the rural set aside is. Eight hundred and ninety-six thousand. Four hundred and ninety-eight. And then that puts the urban area. At six million eighty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety. Any area. That first jump in money, so. That takes out a little bit for the county oversight, so those would be the two dollar amounts that gets distributed through the projects. After their rank.
So if it, if it were to be considered in the urban. It needs to comply with all of the urban transportation requirements. I know that. Rural has exceptions.
Yes.
That they have. But if, let's say Richmond's big Richmond project wants to be considered with. The urban ones, then it needs to comply with the urban requirements. So if it ranks high enough. That it, that it ranks in the any area funds, then it it gets funded. And uh, it's eligible for what they're proposing. If it. If it uh, if it doesn't rank high enough and then it kicks into the rural set aside. Right, but but no, there's. Just because it qualifies for the any area funds, doesn't kick in any new requirements. Like it was in, as if it was in the urban area. The 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 state code is only differences, state code says. In a urban area, it has to be a capacity related project. And if it's outside of an urban area, it can be a maintenance project. Those are the only differences between. Urban rural. And so it's, it it doesn't, it doesn't matter. If, if it's, you know, what flavor of money if it's in the urban area, does that make sense? I mean, if it ranked high enough to be in any area, it just gets funded out of that general. Uh, if it, if it doesn't rank high enough, then it kicks into the rural set aside.
Well, isn't the only difference the rural? Can put in maintenance projects?
Yeah.
So that's really the only difference.
It's only different. Yeah, so again, one. So once all the rankings are done and we take that list of projects, how they fall, we start with. That's just over six million dollars and we started signing it out. And with a rural project is number two, number three, then it will get those funds till that runs out. And then when that money runs out, then we take that rural set aside and go to the first rural project that wasn't funded. And we apply those down the rural projects till that money runs out as well. So.
But his, his project in Richmond would actually qualify as a capacity project because it's adding new roads. Seconds of light, the ones that wouldn't qualify in urban area are just like a chip still project, you couldn't do that in high park. It wouldn't qualify by state code.
Unless it's part of a new road that you're getting.
Have to make a.
Yes.
You're gonna be able to number six.
Okay.
So we just wanna, we'll go over just. On the script, on the board, on the projector on the screen, we have kind of the rest of. This year's cog cycle and how that will play out. Again, today is October second and we have, we have the presentation. We're asking by the end of the week that you complete your scoring of the projects, the ranking. And then we will meet again on October sixteenth. To, for this board to approve that, that ranking and that scoring. And then if that goes smoothly and everything works out, then. Correct, sorry, it should be Tuesday, October twenty-third. Or twenty-fourth, that Tuesday would go to the couch kind of council for their final approval, that following round, so. At this point, it would be rankings done by the end of this week and then we would be again in two weeks. To grant that final approval of. Of this year's recommendation for the county council. We also just wanna touch on, tomorrow, I'll be sending out the ranking forms for everybody. I have hard copies of these. For anyone that would like a hard copy, you can take the hard copy and get back to us. Otherwise, you'll receive one in your email tomorrow. That will allow you to go in, it lists all the projects, a little about them, what they're asking for. And then what we'd ask is in the yellow box, that's where you're able to put in your ranking. And you'd rank them one to thirteen, one being the project that you want, you think is the most worthwhile, the one that should be funded. And you just rank one through thirteen and that will put in those scores. And then it will add it to the C-TAC scoring that showed in red, it'll put the overall score. Over there in green showing how the project ranked. So.
Give you an example, so if I start putting numbers in there, you'll kinda see those numbers populating. Depending on. What the score is.
And there's zero wisdom in hiding C-TAC scores.
Well, in the past, the. The, the premise has been that the cog would like to see. Those scores as part of their scoring, they. And ultimately, when you approve this overall. Uh, recommendation, you're, you're approving the C-TAC scores plus you're added. But we've always operated and the cog has always desired to see those C-TAC scores, that's why we try to get. The C-TAC scoring done before we hand it off to you, so you know what those numbers are. Uh, I'm open to have whatever you want us.
To me, it's really vibe to be there because number one, you see what they rank now because we've had that other table that we talked about. If you go out and you can read why they did what they did. And that's gonna generate questions in your mind, which I believe creates more transparency than what we're trying to do.
I, I don't, I, I don't disagree and I don't think the argument that I'm making is that, that, the, the. That everybody on the cog doesn't see those scores. I'm just wondering if it's not better to have them right, i- if it's better to not have them right next to you while you're doing your scoring. Does that make sense? So you have them, they're on the sheet, you go through, you read, read through into your analysis, for example, on the, on the other page where all the, the cog gave their feedback. You can see what the pub scores it, but there is just something when you see a number sitting there that can, that they can bias your, your judgment a little bit. Just worrying it was better not to have it right side by side when you're plugging them as well. But I, I do, I agree that it's important to have those scores and know what the C-TAC has as rate of.
Understand where, where you're saying, Jason, but recognize you've got all the mayors in the county. It'll be, if there's the bias, it can be a bias across the board, the same.
Yeah.
I, I would hope that people would look at this as. At least on the urban, as we're looking at transportation. Not city, we're looking at transportation for our county. I understand rural communities, they have that exception, but. From instead built to, I remember we should be looking at.
Well, we really don't because we all use the roads.
Well, yeah, so, but we should be, no, I'm just saying that the money that you're buying for that thirteen half percent. You have different requirements, but we should be looking at transportation. Being biased as you would think. If you, if something is ranked high and you're putting it dead last, yeah, you're biased.
I, I, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna rub off feathers, it's not that huge of a deal, I just, I just know the. Human nature, you see a higher score somewhere, you're going to score something, you, you, you could actually score something higher based on what the C-TAC score right next to it is saying. Um, but, but I, I, I agree, we need to be as objective as we can and we need to look at, at our, our, our mission as a body and that's what needs to govern how we. How we score these things, I, um, that would be just a thought, so I think everybody's very well there.
So just to point out, there's a table below, and as you put your scores in here, it will sort of. Sort that automatically and kinda rank it, so you can kinda see after you put your scores in. What is the, the final ranking of those, so you can look it over and make sure it's the way you want it. We're gonna assume. At five P M on Oc- October sixth. Whatever you put in. Is your final score. So you don't need to send this email, anything, once you put the scores in, you can access some. Little tally and an average, it was done work from there. We're gonna assume whatever's in at five P M on October sixth. Is your final score. We're not gonna, in the past, we've kinda asked. You, you can do it if you want, well, I'll, I'll ask this question. In the past, we've said, send me an email and, and tell me it's final, we could still do that. Or we, if you don't wanna bother with that, we'll just assume October sixth, it's baked in.
And then a reply back, so we're sure that.
Okay, let's do that, so.
You don't mind.
Yeah, no, that's fine, so, uh, if you, when you get your scores in, just shoot Jesse or myself an email. And we'll shoot an email back saying, yes, you're good, that way you know they're in. For those of you that don't wanna do the electronically, you have hard copies, we just asked that you. Mail that, drop it off, email, I guess in that case you can email a scan to us. By five P M on October sixth. Any questions on that, filling it out?
So I said, you'll get those tomorrow in your email, there'll be a link to click to pull those, if there is an issue or you have a problem, let me know, again, hopefully it all. Runs smoothly sometime, links don't work or something like that, so if you do have anything to do, let me know, I'll keep that resolved for you.